There you go. There you go. Has everybody signed in? Those who want to speak. Tammy, pick up the sheet. They've all sent this right in.
Anyone just sign off? Yes.
Which one?
To speak, budget.
Sign that sheet. Okay. Thank you. So after budget and all of this. What's that?
An agenda. Do you have an extra?
You ready, buddy?
Sir.
Okay, I'm gonna call the Loudoun County Commission meeting for June 24th, 2024 to order. I would ask one thing. If you have cell phones, silence them, please. Tammy, call and roll and make sure we have a floor.
Randolph.
Here.
James.
Here.
Jenkins.
Here.
Quillen. Here. Satterfield.
Here.
Whitfield.
Here.
Cullen.
Here.
Morrison.
Here.
Shaver.
Here.
Waller.
Here. Okay. Gonna start with public comments on the budget. First, about this Pandora Veilin.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Pandora Veilin. I'm a Loudoun County resident. Your taxpaying constituents are not asking you for anything unreasonable. We've been polite, but we are firm in our resolve. Basic critical facts are still missing and must be known before you, our commissioners, vote to raise our taxes for $115 million of school proposals. We need county commission to do what the county attorney advised you to do, which is to have the General Assembly determine whether or not Lenore City district students must be allowed to enroll in our county district schools. If we don't have to enroll them, that will allow us to remove over 300 students and free up a lot of classroom space at Eaton and North Middle Schools especially. That alone would save us millions of dollars of new construction costs because those 300-plus students have been included in the current proposal for the New Norton School. After that item is determined, then we want an unbiased professional hired to analyze what our true needs in our schools are and what the accurate projected growth needs are. Right now, we are looking at a wish list. You need a true needs analysis. The Board of Education should have provided you with this information before an architect was ever hired. So if the Board of Education is upset now due to delays, the fault lies at the feet of the Board of Education, not you. But the bottom line is, no executives in your capacity can make a rational, fact-based decision with so much critical information still unknown. Thank you.
Evie Frazier? Skip to the next one. Okay. Dennis Littleton.
Go with Dennis.
It's Denise. Hi, my name is Denise Littleton. I'm a Loudoun County resident. After attending the meetings over the past week, two words have come to mind. It is facts and accountability. I'll begin with the facts. Birth rates have decreased even though growth is occurring. The average school building cost is 42 million nationally. Loudoun County is educating other counties' kids on our gun. The Nor City High School has provided a short-term solution, at the very least, to complete a needs assessment. Nothing in the budget contemplates the operational cost of this new facility. It could very likely exceed the debt service. And for accountability, no needs assessment has been completed. This is not a time to play political football. Political decisions are different from decisions based on facts. And we pay taxes based on facts.
Mr. Chairman, I just got a text that the streaming isn't working. Can we check that?
John Olson.
John Olson, Loudoun County. I have a clarification. Now, Lenore City can send students to Loudoun County. Loudoun County legally asked to accept them. Loudoun County students who want to attend Lenore City may attend at the permission of Lenore City. Lenore City is not legally bound to accept the Loudoun County students. I want to know if there are facilities in Loudoun County for Loudoun County students. Can Loudoun County students' schools prevent students from leaving Loudoun County School District to attend in Lenore City? If you don't have that right, you can't control your student population. Looking at justification for the schools. The Board Center at Unionist Tennessee shows about 10 years out. There will be 273 more kids in the high school age in the year 2024. That would mean probably 100 students for Loudoun County schools. That translates to 25 students per class. Probably a justification for building a 1,200-student high school. If we go to the other extreme, Oral Population Review indicates a 3.87% increase in population. Loudoun County has 52,000 people with a student enrollment of 5,811%. Standard in Tennessee is 14%. Using the 52,000, 14%, a population increase of 8,500 people would yield enrollment of 1,200 students. So compounding 3.87%, what would happen is, the first 1,200-student school would be filled by January of 2028. The second 1,200-student school would be filled by June of '31. The third school would be filled by July of '34. And a fourth school would be filled by February of '37. So at 115 million per school, we should be funding four schools of $460 million. So do we put a double-wide in for 25 students? Or do we fund four schools for half a billion dollars? And then the other thing is, at any one time, and I guess this is a real problem, Lenore City can dump us. And if that happens, you've got 700 students on your doorstep. You don't know what to do. We need to study alternative plans.
Thank you. Blake Moore. I know he's here.
I'm Blake Moore, and I'm a Loudoun County resident. I was recently chastised for my stand on this property tax increase issued by Commissioner Randolph because he stated that people had received ample opportunity to voice their concerns and to learn everything they needed to know by attending all of the Loudoun County School Board meetings. So I went back and reviewed all those meetings available online for last year. Yeah, I have a boring life. What seemed odd, based on what Mr. Randolph told me, was that there never seemed to be a quorum of our commissioners in attendance at the school board meetings. The second thing that I noticed is I could not find a single meeting where there was a formal presentation regarding alternative solutions, zoning, a bid process for the architect and the new school, justification cost, why some schools in our county are well under capacity, or a discussion about why the county felt the purchased property was somehow worth twice its previous value a few short months after it was purchased by First Baptist Church. Our student aggregate, or our aggregate students-to-teacher ratio is based on independent published sources are as follows. Elementary schools currently are at 13.4 students to one teacher. Middle schools, 17 to one. Loudoun High and Greenback at 13.5 to one. Tennessee Code 49 states that the maximum classroom size requirements for grades K through 3 are 20 to one. Grades 4 through 6, 25 to one. Grades 7 through 12, 30 to one. In fact, the commissioners are only wanting what is in the best interest of the students, needing to look not only at the points I have made previously, but also at the debt that these very students will face for at least the next 30 years. In addition to runaway inflation, the cost of housing, as well as property reappraisals that's going to occur in a couple of years, that could cause property taxes to skyrocket in addition to tax rate increases being proposed. Commissioners are charged with the duty of attending to the business of their citizens and owe an obligation of loyalty to the public as they perform their duties. They are required to exercise their discretion and judgment free from the taint of self-interest, bias, and undisclosed conflicts of interest. I ask you again, before you vote, show your work.
Gary Bush.
Good evening. Thank you. My name's Gary Bush, and of course, I'm a Loudoun County resident. I've sat through these meetings for two, over two years now and attended a lot of meetings to kind of get an understanding of how things work. One of the things I'd like to throw out tonight is procedural challenges affecting the TCU Budget Committee requirements and what's transpired this year with regards to the school. The school board responsibility is very clearly called out that they have, especially in the state of Tennessee, which is basically a dependent school district. One of nine states only. 14 independent districts are in Tennessee total. But the responsibility calls out that the school board and the director of schools has the responsibility to basically put together the budget, the needs of the students, and everything else presented to the school. The Budget Committee, Budget Committee is supposed to approve. The only purpose and the only responsibility of this organization is the fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers, to keep the taxes as low as possible. This basically, when I started thinking this and heard the things last week, it set alarms off. No place on there does it says that this commission is supposed to get engaged with the school board to help them put together what they're telling you they need. They have the responsibility to do that. In business, I would have basically got privately fired if I did that. So I'm telling you right now. And I don't think you want this being seen across the state. This type of thing going out, there's a reason a lot of people open arms. Do the right thing.
Robert Gross.
Good evening. I'm Robert Gross, Loudoun County resident. My wife and I moved here because of Loudoun County's politics, Loudoun County's taxes, and the transparency and fairness here. I'm a retired federal law enforcement officer. I worked on the Mexican border, and I've watched what happens when we open the schools in the wrong way to the wrong people. I certainly hope that it doesn't happen here. I must say, we're, the United States is a republic, and it's the duty of our elected representatives to represent and reflect the will of the constituents. As one of your constituents, I respectfully request that this commission make no commitments to increase taxes, to fund any school improvements, until an independent survey is conducted. And that independent survey shows us what the results are and what is really needed in this county to benefit the county's residents and students. Therefore, in light of these uncertain times, high inflation, constant crises, I also hope that this commission will not make any decisions until after the 2024 presidential election, as things could change radically in the entire United States of America come January 20th. And I think that the economy and the way the country is going needs to be examined before we commit to any large expenses and put any further burden on the taxpayers of Loudoun County. Thank you for your time.
Yeah. Robert Billodeen. There you go.
Good try.
I was close. Give me a cigar.
My name is Paul Billodeen, and I'm a resident of Loudoun County, and I'm absolutely happy to be here. Not just here, but in your geography. We've been here two years, and we just love this place. And when I took a look at your draft proposal, your resolution today, I noted that you've been pretty fiscally responsible. Your education debt service is a small number. And I was concerned when I began to learn about the school, all right, and the school loan and what it was going to do. And I hated to see that small number grow by a factor of three. Other people have talked about the need for the school, so I'm not going to say anything about that. I'm just going to say, I appreciate the value of 25 cents. Because that 25 cents apply to our properties. For a person who has a $100,000 loan, and aren't many of those, okay, it's $250 a year. For a person who has a $300,000 loan, it's $750 a year. That's not chump change. That's not 25 cents. That's hundreds of dollars. And we're all facing some pretty heavy costs. It's coming from everywhere, everywhere. Government, businesses, and everything. So I ask you to really seriously think carefully about taking out a loan that's going to cost all of your constituents 250, 500, 750, and on up. Thank you.
Jim Stevenson.
Hello, good evening. My name is Jim Stevenson, and I'm a resident of Loudoun County. And I want to thank all of you for allowing us to come up here and speak our minds, which was a little shaky at the last meeting last week, when we met at the other location. It was really taken that a number of you refused to stay and listen to the taxpayers' concerns, listened to our questions. Y'all just walked out. Now, there were a number of you that stayed. They were interested in hearing what we had to say. But I think it comes down to ethics. And if I'm a paid commissioner of Loudoun County, I would be very interested in what everybody has to say. I'm not going to just get up and walk out because you don't like what we're saying. So bottom line is ethics. Now, everybody else is talking about a community needs assessment. That's essential. We have to have a needs assessment performed, not just firing from the hip and everybody knows, boy, we need schools and we're going to spend $115 million. And it's just common sense because the Board of Education says we need schools. Well, that's not how you work. $115 million is a lot. You spread it over 30 years, and how many million is that? Half a, you know, half a billion? What are we talking about here? You know, this is our money, and many of us are on fixed incomes. And when you're, you're just, oh, well, let's just go spend the money, and you guys are going to pay for it. That doesn't fly with me. Doesn't fly with any of the taxpayers, I think, that are in this room. That's basically it. I thank you very much for the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you. Dorothy Sawyer.
I pass so that my husband will be nice.
Bob Sawyer. Okay.
Hi, I'm Bob Sawyer. I am a resident of Loudoun County. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak. You're asking us for over $100 million for 1,200 students to have a new school. This county's numbers for education aren't very good. And from when I saw the plans, there seems to be way, way too much emphasis on sports, stadiums, et cetera. My kids went to parochial school. I paid my school taxes, plus I paid a hefty amount of money for them to go to school. When they needed to expand, they brought in portable classrooms and did that for many, many years. The city I lived in, I saw them build a new high school. 10 years later, they sold it because they didn't need it. Then another 20 years later, they built another one. Then they sold that. We have to know that we really need this new school and the price of it. Thank you very much.
Dr. Smith.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Melissa Smith, and beginning July 1st, I will be the Director of Lenore City Schools. Our district has previously shared the well-documented facts regarding our enrollment data and detailed information about the over $8 million in facility upgrades, primarily at Lenore City High School, that have been accomplished without assuming additional debt. We have hosted community open houses to showcase our facilities and would be honored to tour any visitor who would like to view our space. There's no doubt ours is a growing community, and we recognize that. And as a result of the ongoing enhancements to programs and facilities, it is with confidence we can say Lenore City High School is prepared to accommodate additional enrollment now and in the future. I am here to share reassurance that Lenore City Schools will continue as we have done since our high school was first established to welcome all 912 students in the north end of Loudoun County to enroll in Lenore City High School tuition-free. I am pleased to read the following resolution, which publicly affirms our existing board policy 6.204 of defining 912 students in the north end of Loudoun County as in-district students. This resolution was approved, and the executive section of the Board of Education will be entered into the vote's official minutes at our meeting on July 11th, 2024. Whereas the Lenore City School Board of Education operates the Lenore City Schools, and whereas the board provides a challenging curriculum, associated relevant educational opportunities, and extracurricular activities that are designed to prepare all students who attend this school district for success in further academic endeavors or in the workplace. And whereas the board has welcomed students onto the, into the school district who are residents of the county, but for who, for any myriad of reasons, choose to pursue their courses of study in Lenore City School District. And whereas the board has an expressed desire to continue to serve county students in the future, most particularly in grades 9 through 12, to continue to offer them excellence in their educational experiences, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Lenore City School System that county students in grades 9 through 12, who reside in all areas of the northern portion of Loudoun County, shall be permitted to attend Lenore City High School. We have further resolved that this offer of attendance for Loudoun County students shall be without charge of any out-of-district tuition or any related out-of-district fees as stated in LCS Board Policy 6.204. This resolution was adopted by the Board of Education for the Lenore City Schools, and on the 11th day of July, 2024, shall be spread upon the minutes of the board for said meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bobby Johnson. I know, he's in the areas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner. Bobby Johnson, Loudoun County School Board, I'm Vice Chairman. One, I want to let you all know that I've heard questions and stuff. One, I'll answer these before I get started. We're not building one school. We're building four. One new one. Four with Philly added on, Greenback getting their stuff, and Loudoun High getting the tech stuff. So the $115 million, it's not one school. That's spread out amongst the four. The other thing is, the property at the church, we got seven more acres with it. We didn't buy just what the church had. We bought more. So that's the reason why was more. When we voted on this, our board approved 10-0. Jenkins, Commissioner, was on school board. He voted for it. And we didn't just rush in to decide this is all we wanted. Which study? This is not the only building program that some of us have been involved with. I've been on the board 20 years. And the last time we went and we did it, an assessment 17 years ago, was over Greenback. Community come out, didn't want Greenback. So we did it. We were pushing not only for that, we were pushing for other stuff, like Fort Loudon Middle School. That assessment come back and said we didn't need the Fort Loudon Middle School, but it did say we need the Greenback. So we built it. We built both. And thank God that we did because of the growth that is down here. We combined Loudoun Elementary and Fort Loudon, the old one. And with the growth and having the new one, we'd have been in a big mess if we didn't do it. So I mean, I understand what you're talking about, the assessment, but sometimes those assessments don't work. If you ride up on the northern end of the county, you can go around and see what all's going on, what's being built. And Rosemary, you're right. Mr. Chaper had a couple of mess-ups on his map, but you're wrong in the number as far as it's not 5,000, but it's over 4,000 in that. And look, we're going, what we're looking at building is that's what we're going off of. There's also a couple that wasn't listed on there. Okay? The other thing, you look at Lenore City. Lenore City, she just said that it's growing up there. They went out and purchased land. They just purchased land the other day at their board meeting because of the growth that's coming. It's coming, and it takes three years to build this. If we build a school, three years. So, and I'll go with what Dr. Barker said. Dr. Barker said, the middle school's full, overcrowded. Well, in three years, where are they going to be at? They're going to the high school. We didn't just throw a wish list together. We've done homework on this. And some of you might not agree, but we have. And we didn't throw, and understand this, I'm a single dad. I understand about the taxes. I get that. I've lived here my whole life. This is unprecedented growth that has happened. Growth where you've lived here your whole life. We've never saw growth like this. No, we haven't.
Call it, call it.
Wait a minute.
Hey, he's been respectful to you all.
And to say that we just threw this together and we hit it, we hadn't. When we first started out, we went and met with Lenore City. We went and sat down with them and discussed what we were going to do. We've not hit anything. You all even voted for us to get the money to buy the land, did you not? So where, where we hit anything? We've hit nothing. Now, you might not agree, and that's fine. But this is America. You don't have to agree. But we hadn't hit anything from anybody. We hadn't done anything wrong. And we've been over here. And Ms. Hunter, she's the one who comes to meetings all the time. She'll tell you too, that I'm always open to ask. And you can ask me any question at all. You can call me anytime. I have done things.
Where's the assessment?
Thank you.
Where's the?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
May I respond?
Let's get to the end here. Rick Dran.
I'm going to direct what he said.
First of all, I'd like to respectfully ask if the time limit is two minutes or is it four minutes?
Two minutes.
Oh, I see, because we have certain exceptions. I understand. Well, my name is Rick Dran. I'm a Loudoun County resident. I would like to thank my conservative, frugal, fiscally responsible county commission for this opportunity to speak. I hope it stays that way. There's been a lot of talk and discussion about our new school bond levy, and I don't think it's useful to continue to present more evidence, because the evidence is really shaky. We've seen that through these discussions. I don't think we need to argue about the enrollment numbers, but the enrollment numbers are very cloudy, depending on whose stats you use. The growth numbers, well, they're pretty cloudy too. And all the land deal, I don't think we need to scrutinize the past land deals or the present land deal, because that's pretty cloudy too, so we'll just skip those. But, you know, I hear a lot of commissioners say, well, it's only $1.77. That's a lot less than what you came for. Listen, I could buy, Ingalls has a sale on chicken gizzards, but I'm not gonna buy the damn things because I don't want them and I don't need them. So I'm just gonna say tonight, that if the decision is made to recommend to the school board that we conduct a thorough, comprehensive, unbiased, third-party study examining all the possibilities and all the different scenarios, and that study comes back and unequivocally states that a new middle-high school complex is the best solution for our kids, and the location adjacent to First Baptist Lenore City Church is the most appropriate location, then I will support a new school. Not only will I support it, but I'll advocate for it. But we need the study because of all the clouds.
Richard Poe.
Thanks. My name is Richard Poe, I'm a Loudoun County resident. I agree a lot with what Rick just said. I'm pro-education. You know, we need to concentrate on our proficiency. When the superintendent gave a presentation in front of a group, you know, our proficiency is way down. The quoted numbers that they're using to justify the new schools, and you did everything based upon schools as a total instead of going by grade. And we should know who's going up on each grade. I agree, we need to, you know, for 115 million, it is well worth it to spend $100,000 in that neighborhood to have an independent study telling us exactly what we need, where we need it. And, you know, I'm with Rick. If it shows that we need it, where we need it, I'm all for it. But before we spend $115 million, you know, why can't we spend one tenth of one percent to see really what is necessary and what we should do to move forward? Thank you.
Mary Gaddy.
My comments this evening are directed to those of you who have an open mind about the proposed property tax increase. This fundamental question to my mind has not yet been answered, and the question is this. Is the county school district required by state law to accept students from Lenore City and elsewhere around the district? Until you have a definitive answer to that question, I think any decision concerning the need to build a new school is premature. Our state representative Lowell Russell says we aren't required to do so unless there's seat availability. Tennessee law doesn't require that we do, and in fact leaves it up to the school boards to determine their student eligibility requirements. And lastly, two out of three lawyers have weighed in to say that we don't have to accept students from outside of our school district. If it is indeed determined that the county isn't required to accept students from outside the district, then our school board can reassess their infrastructure needs based upon the county's growth projections and then revise their facility requirements that best meets the needs of our students in the county. For those of you who may be prepared this evening to approve the $95 million expenditure for the new school, I respectfully ask that you share the information that you have that answers the two fundamental questions. Please share with us and your fellow commissioners the verifiable information that says that we are required by the state to accept students from outside of our district. Because until you have a definitive answer to that question, I think it's irresponsible to make a $95 million decision for a new middle school and high school. And do you have independently verified population data from Lenore City that supports the growth projections in Mr. Garrett's presentation? Because last week Commissioner Quillen did share some conflicting housing data that challenged the superintendent's information. Commissioner Shaver assured us that all of this information in the presentation was accurate to the letter and that there wasn't a single line that was wrong because he had attended the meetings. So I'm asking that Commissioner Shaver, please share the supporting documentation from those meetings that substantiates the projections are indeed accurate that Mr. Garrett shared with us. With all due respect, if you don't have definitive answers to the student eligibility requirements to attend our county schools, as well as independently verified population data for this area, then the fiscally responsible decision at this time is to vote no on the proposed property tax increase. Thank you.
Nadine Whitkop. Hope I didn't mark, there you go.
I'm Nadine Whitkop, and I'm from Greenback. And in Greenback, we have a lot of families that are sitting home right now. They're fixing meals for their families. They are a modest means. They are people that are living in Bidenomic times. They are people that are living with high inflation. They're people that are living with high gas taxes. And now you guys wanna add to that burden, and it won't be just this year, it'll be for 30 years. I would hope that you would give some consideration, not only to the most affluent in our community, but all those who are sitting home and can't attend these meetings and are living on a much less income. Thank you.
Bernie Horton.
I'm going to wave. I've said, everything that I was gonna say has already been said.
Thank you. Andrew Biddle. There we go.
My name is Andrew Biddle, I'm a Loudoun County resident. This is my second meeting I've ever been to. So the first meeting I came to, I expected to see a debate about this issue. I think that I'm one of the 99% that don't come to these meetings because we count on y'all to be fiscally responsible, you know, follow, you know, what we voted for. And I have a lot to say about this, and I still have a minute and a half. Honestly, we don't need to see anything more than a needs assessment for this new school. If you're gonna raise my taxes by 25 cents, you need to at least show me some proof that this is necessary. And I tell you, there's a lot of people sitting at home that aren't aware about this. It's like a, it's a line, it's a line adjustment on the third page of your agenda that you're gonna add this to our taxes. It's not a rate. Thank you.
Pat Hunter.
My name is Pat Hunter, and yes, I do attend school board meetings, but I haven't been able to get all the answers to my questions and concerns, such as the traffic study. I've been waiting for months and months. I've contacted T.G.O. I think we have a right to know, most especially when the neighbors, 60 of them, signed a petition and the person that collected the petition asked that they be entered into the record and they were not. That's terrible. The other concern that I have is that the newspaper notice, public notice, showed the current property tax rate. I think that was very deceptive. It should have showed the proposed tax increase of $1.75. The other thing is, I was back, I attended school board meetings back in 2011, a lot of them, and I supported a new school in Greenback. And they did a study prior to that. It was a $47,000 study, which looked at demographics, which looked at growth, which looked at capacity, and we need this again. This was, this had to do with the 43 million. Now we're talking about 115 million. And, you know, I thought it was terrible when a big portion of that school was, the growth was cut out of that school and was roughly about 6 million. It's about the same amount as what you're proposing, or the school board is proposing for a new football stadium, artificial turf and gym. I think academics is more important, especially since these classes were cut out. The other concern that I have is that the numbers that I was looking at, and this is why I think the study is needed, Little Loudoun Elementary, the school enrollment is greater than, than the schools that we're gonna build a new school for. That needs to be looked at. And the last thing that I have to say is that I support the sheriff and the jail his budgets because I think that they should be approved as submitted. I think it takes a lot of courage for someone to put on a vest and protect us and to keep our community safe.
Okay, that concludes the public comments for the budget adoption. Your name was? I blew it, sorry.
Hi, James Lee's, county resident here. I was gonna mention a few remarks on the situation here. I hope the people have done it more eloquently than I could, so I'm not just gonna retrace, pass around what people talked about. I just wrote down a couple, I was listening to other people's comments, a couple comments, a couple positions here that I thought I would bring up here. I just found out about this situation about a week ago from a neighbor. And I've been talking to people in my neighborhood, and I've gotta say, I have not talked to one person. And I've talked to, and I talked to people at a breakfast club that I belong to. There was 50 people there at the breakfast, breakfast club. Only one person that I've talked to, from my neighborhood and at the breakfast club, supported what you're doing. One, and I'm not exaggerating. And when I told him that the school ratio of teacher to students is 1 in 15, that's your reported ratio. His only defense was that the Board was lying and it's worse. And I said to him, well, if that's true, that opens up a bigger problem. So if the student, teacher-student ratio is 1 in 15, and I believe that is Lenore City and the county is 1 in 16, where I came from before I moved down this area, the school, the teacher-student ratio was 1 in 28. One person said, 1 in 15 is gold. There's absolutely no reason to build a building. I'm gonna repeat that, 1 in 15 is gold. I came from 1 in 28, and at one point it was 1 in 32. The other question is, when you look at how this land was purchased, it seems like the only people that really profited here was the Baptist church. So my question is, of your body right up here, what's the genesis of this? Who was the one who started dreaming up this idea and promoting it? Can somebody point to the person? Because I know it was only one individual. Are you gonna remain mute and protect him? I've had several people tell me who it is, happens to be a member of that Baptist church. Can somebody, does somebody have the backbone to point to them, or are we gonna protect the genesis here? Okay, so you're gonna protect somebody. I get it. Hint, he's sitting over in that direction? No, you got your hand up. You're gonna point, or, I'm still in two minutes. That's a personal tag, wanting to know the genesis of this idea? That's interesting. Okay, I'm very pro, I gotta wrap up here, I'm very pro-education. I have a teaching degree, also I'm retired. So you can't say that I'm not pro-education, but I'm also pro-building wings on the buildings. So if you got an overpopulation problem in a school, you can build a wing, right? You can build a second floor on an existing school structure, right? Which is far cheaper than what you people looked on. You know, I mean, there's all kinds of solutions here to this problem. So, all right, if you wanna protect any genesis, that's fine.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the public comments, and I apologize for missing you. But anyway, I will now turn it over to Erin and Buddy.
Excuse me, one second. Henry, the young lady had a comment she wanted to make, and you held it off until the end of the public comments. She was gonna rebut something that was said by the school board.
I was just going to, Mr. Johnson was there, I was just going to put a comment in to say that the numbers I presented were the real numbers, not proposed numbers. That's all, I was just gonna correct.
Thank you.
Can you use your microphones, please? Can't hear you back here.
Not saying anything. Erin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Push the button down. All right. Hear me? No. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The budget adoption for Loudoun County requires approval by the legislative body of three resolutions. The appropriations resolution, the tax levy resolution, and the nonprofits resolution. The county legislative body has an obligation to approve appropriations in county departments, establish a tax rate, and approve appropriations to nonprofit organizations. So, for letter A, consideration of recommendation to approve a resolution making appropriations for the various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Loudoun County, Tennessee for the year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025.
Make motion we approve, it's written.
Okay, Ms. Garrett made the motion. Commissioner Shaver seconded it. Okay, we got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Whitfield to approve the appropriations resolution, seconded by Commissioner Shaver. Any further discussion? Any comments? Tammy, call the roll.
Jeans?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Quillen?
Aye.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yes.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved.
Letter B. Letter B is consideration of recommendation to approve a resolution fixing the tax levy in Loudoun County, Tennessee, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024.
I move that we delay raising the tax levy until there is an independent feasibility study, student assessment, and traffic study completed.
I'll say it then.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Quillen to delay the tax levy until the study is completed, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins.
And what all did that include, Rosemary?
An independent feasibility study, student assessment, and traffic study.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Yeah, we have a motion by Commissioner Quillen, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins, to not increase the tax levy until the study is done. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
No further discussion?
Before you move on, I will say that I did serve on the school board whenever it was voted on, and at the time, numbers did show, that was back in '21. But today's numbers show a little different. That's the reason I'm going in the direction I'm going. I would like to see a study done, so.
Any further discussion? A yes vote will keep the tax rate the same until the study is done. A no vote will move on. Tammy, call or roll.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Quillen?
Aye.
Satterfield?
Is this our duty to do, or is this not a school board faction? The tax levy? No, no, I'm talking about the study. The study, all the things that Rosemary just asked. I mean, we're stepping into the school board's shoes. Do the right doing, study?
No.
Whitfield?
No.
Cullen?
Yes.
Morrison?
No.
Shaver?
No.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
No.
Jeans?
No.
None of us are going to get voted out.
You're all going to be voted out.
Hey, can we? Check on something right quick, because Bill Jeans, you are a member of the school. As an employee, you did not read a statement of conflict.
My, well, hold on, I'll give you the vote count. It was six nays, four yeses. Now.
And talking to it.
I don't know the exact ruling. I'm mowing the yard at the softball field. The school gives me a small check for...
Oh, you're going to subject 30 years of debt to the people in Greenback for a, for an artificial turf?
What we don't.
Yes.
Y'all know this is...
I challenge it, so you're going to have to take care of that. Raise your, raise your...
Board of Education hates facts.
Show us you represent the people.
Mr. Chairman, did you read the votes for and against? Because it was so hard for us to hear.
Yeah, six nays.
Who were they? Because we couldn't hear from their microphones.
Who voted them?
Yeah, who voted which way? We did not hear.
I'll call them out. Jenkins voted yes, Quillen voted yes, Satterfield no, Whitfield no, Cullen yes, Morrison no, Shaver no, Waller yes, Randolph no, Jeans no.
Thank you.
So it failed.
So you don't listen to your constituents, obviously.
That would fail.
Let's do an investigation, let's all put our money together and investigate whose bank accounts are getting the money.
The Baptist church that stole the land?
Is there a conflict? Do you have a conflict? Okay, abstain.
Senator should have a conflict.
If the revote for him to abstain, it needs to be a motion to reconsider and then revote. You can't just, after the vote's had, we can't start changing. It has to be a motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider, then.
Okay. Commissioner Jenkins is making a motion to reconsider.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Quillen.
Thank you, District Two.
Settle down, so I can hear. We've got a motion by Commissioner Jenkins, seconded by Commissioner Quillen to reconsider. Any further discussion?
Let's hear some discussion.
Yeah.
And we want to hear it.
That's right.
Do we have proof that we are required to access students that don't, that are not a county district? I haven't seen anything that says that we do. And that seems like a very fundamental question that needs to be answered.
Same.
Do it!
Delay the vote, delay!
Hold on.
Do the damn study, it's only 1,000, so go ahead.
Settle down. Okay, we got a motion and a second for reconsider. It's the same vote. Yes, if you want to delay it for a study, no, if you don't want to delay it.
Speak up, or stand up.
Tammy, call or roll.
Quillen?
Yes.
Satterfield?
No.
Whitfield?
No!
Cullen?
Yes.
Morrison?
No.
Shaver?
No.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
No.
Jeans?
Abstain.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Why are you afraid to do a study? Randolph has kids in school.
Prove to us you need the money, that's all we're asking.
Settle down.
We can settle down, taxes are coming up! What are you talking about? Settle down.
Settle down.
Mr. Chairman, we voted on the budget, correct?
Yes.
We're on the tax levy now, correct?
Yep.
Okay, the conflict of interest arises if you or your spouse or your immediate family works for somebody who's voting in on the budget. There's no conflict of interest on the property tax portion of this conflict, nor is there on the, on the nonprofit section. So this was a lot of the doom for nothing. The first one is where if you have a conflict, you've been where you take that.
Take the votes? Five nos, four yeses. Six votes takes the carry. Motion failed.
Four.
Yes.
Four. Oh, it failed!
All right, we're back to now the tax levy.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend the tax levy resolution to change the combined property tax rate to 1.7683 on each $100,000 of taxable property outside the city limits of the North City. This motion also includes adjusting the rate in the educational debt service fund from 13 to 38 pennies.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Whitfield. Do we have a second?
I'll make a second, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, I'm trying to hear. I understand where you're at.
So are we!
Here's the mic!
Sitting right here.
It's not on!
Okay, we got... Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Whitfield, seconded by Commissioner Shaver, to increase the tax levy from 1.51 to 1.76, including the adjustment in the debt service.
I do have a question before we move on, and it'll be for the architect that's doing it, and that's about the road assessment that she's supposed to have already had done and should already have the answers to. Do we have any answers on that with the road study?
T-God still has not returned it to us. They're telling us something else.
Well, if we don't have answers, it's more of a reason why we should not be able to move forward.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to increase the tax levy from 1.51 to 1.76. Motion was made by Commissioner Whitfield, seconded by Commissioner Shaver. Any further discussion?
I would just encourage everybody that's getting ready to vote to listen to your constituents. There, there are so many unanswered questions. Like we said, there's been no independent feasibility study done. We don't have a traffic study done. And, and I think it's reckless, in a sense, that, that we are just pushing something through before we even know if we need it.
Yep.
In, in real estate, with a contract, you do all your due diligence before you ever buy the property. And it seems like we have done everything backwards. We bought the property, and now we're, we're trying to figure out what we need. So I, I would just tell everybody to take a hard look at, at what you've, what you've seen tonight, what you've heard tonight, and, and do the right thing.
Okay, the vote yes is to increase the tax rate. The vote no will be not to increase it. Tammy, call or roll.
Satterfield?
Living on a fixed income, yes.
Cullen?
No.
Morrison?
Yes.
You want to say that to my face?
Shaver?
Hold on! Settle down. Settle down. Continue the vote, Tammy.
Shaver?
Yes.
Waller?
No.
Randolph?
Yes.
Jeans?
And I'm voting on a tax levy, not the school. So yes.
Jenkins?
No.
Quillen?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request a recall, or just a re, or just the names, please.
Don't be a call back up.
Please.
Satterfield, yes. Whitfield, yes. Cullen, no. Morrison, yes. Shaver, yes. Waller, no. Randolph, yes. Jeans, yes. Jenkins, no. Quillen, no.
Thank you.
It passes 6-4.
Well, one more question then, Buddy. Do you have the power to be able to veto that? Don't you have the ability to be able to veto that?
I do.
I'll ask you if you would do so.
Want to move on, or do you want to speak?
Yeah, move on.
Okay. Erin, the last part.
Letter B is consideration of recommendation to approve a resolution making appropriations to nonprofit organizations serving Loudoun County, Tennessee, for the year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, as written.
Okay, hold on. Motion's been made by Commissioner Whitfield to approve the nonprofits, as written. Do we have a second? Second. Second where? Here. Second by Commissioner Satterfield. Any further discussion?
Could I ask a question? On the nonprofits, I'm looking down through here. The Ibis Place is not getting their same amount they got last year. Matter of fact, they're getting zero. Is there a reason?
Tell, went through the budget committee.
Excuse me?
Went through the budget committee.
We moved it to another one.
Moving, okay.
You can make replies when the motion is handled.
Okay, the motion was by Commissioner Whitfield, seconded by Commissioner Satterfield to approve the nonprofits, as written. Any further discussion? Tammy, call or roll.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yes.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
Yes.
Jeans?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Quillen?
Aye.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Motion carries 10-0. It passes. Is that it?
That's all that I have.
Okay, that concludes the budget adoption process. Before I turn the meeting over to go to the second part, Jimmy Davis wanted to say something on behalf of the sheriff's department.
I know this year was very difficult for the budget committee to get through the budget process with the schools, but on behalf of the sheriff's office and the men and women I've been elected to serve with, to thank you for the budget approval that you have for us. Just want to say thank you.
Thank you. To the recess. Hold on. To all the deputies that fold themselves in a Mark cruiser, you got my undying gratitude. I'm going to call for a five-minute recess.
It's 10.
Is that 10?
It'll be 30.
I'll give you 10, how's that? And thank you, it's been a rough evening. And thank you, it's been a rough evening.
He left all his stuff.
The only part that matters is the end in a baseball game.
Jim Jenkins, you still hanging in there?
Hey, hey, you see any of them out there?
Satterfield's out there.
Okay.
Okay, let's go.
Hit the hammer, let's start it up.
Okay, we're going to reconvene. Okay.
Is this the public hearing, Mr. Chairman, or did I need to add the agenda items right now?
No, public hearing. Jim Jenkins got two items.
I'm with you.
Okay, I'm calling it to order. Jim Jenkins, you got two resolutions.
Yes, sir. Today is a resolution amending the zoning map of Loudoun County, Tennessee pursuant to Chapter 7, 13-7-105 Tennessee Code annotated, to rezone from C2 General Commercial District to our one suburban residential district. Loudoun County Tax Map 015M Parcel 004.00 Group 8, located at 103 Robinson Drive, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the 2nd Legislative District.
Any comments for Jim?
Item B is a resolution amending the zoning map of Loudoun County, Tennessee pursuant to Chapter 7, 13-7-105 Tennessee Code annotated, to rezone from A2 Rural Residential District to A3 Developing Agricultural District. Loudoun County Tax Map 057 Parcel 286.01, located at 21145 Stinky Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in 4th Legislative District.
This one's in my district. This is Mr. Costner's property. He's going from A1 to A3. This is what's a big topic of Article 5. People were concerned from A1 to A3. This is a perfect candidate I'll be asking for approval when this comes back up.
Okay, there were no public comments for those two items. We'll redo them in just a few minutes, and I won't make you read the whole thing.
I appreciate that.
Okay, I've asked Commissioner Whitfield to open the meeting and do the pledge and a prayer. Read the prayer.
So we'll have a pledge. Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I ask you to bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for this opportunity to serve our great county. I know those people left here unhappy, but I feel deep in the heart that this commission has made the right decision. I ask you to please watch over our first responders, and I ask you to protect our troops in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. Bottom of the fires, Tennessee's up by one.
Okay. Okay, Tammy, call or roll.
Randolph?
Here.
James?
Here.
Jenkins?
Here.
Quillen?
Here.
Satterfield?
Here.
Whitfield?
Here.
Cullen?
Here.
Morrison?
Here.
Shaver?
Here.
Waller?
Here.
Next up is the adoption of the June 24, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I have two items to add. One will be the amendment to cover an emergency HBAC breakdown at the Senior Citizen Center. I assume, Aaron, we're going to be talking about where to get the money and where to take the money and that sort of stuff. Is that going to be handled on your part of the agenda?
Yes.
So I'd like to have that asked added, if everybody's okay with it. The second one is, we've got to add back, and we've got to do again this year, for the year is Mike Garren's statutory bond that's required to be done. That will also be under Aaron's name.
Okay.
I also need to add four notaries that came in a little late. Don't want to wait too long.
Any other adjustments?
Make most approve the agenda as amended.
Second. We got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, who seconded it over here.
Randolph.
Seconded by Commissioner Randolph. Any further discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next up is the reading and acceptance of the June 3, 2023 Loudoun County Commission Minutes.
Mr. Chairman, make most approve the amendments as written.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner... Motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner James. Any further discussion?
It was a second.
James. Any further discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye. Any opposed? One person signed up for public comments, Blake Moore.
Wow, we got five minutes?
Yeah, we go back to five minutes.
That's according to who it is. You got the most so far.
Again, Blake Moore, Loudoun County. Earlier, I spoke of potential conflicts of interest, and on tonight's agenda, Mr. James and Mr. Randolph are wanting to spend $10,000 of our tax dollars on a Little League baseball team, the Loudoun Diamond Club. Is this fair to the other Little League teams throughout our county that might want additional funding from taxpayers or other nonprofits that might come before this governing body? I am not saying that we should not support those in our community, but where does this end and what justifies these expenditures? All government originates with the people and is bound upon their will only and is instituted solely for the good of the whole. Public officers are trustees and servants of the people and are at all times amenable to them. As elected officials, county commissioners are trustees of the people and the purse strings. They have been entrusted with county property and are legally obligated to manage that property for the benefit of their citizens. Commissioners must never forget that the county property and finances over which they have control is not their own. They are subject to every limitation imposed generally by law upon trustees, even when it means giving money to Little League baseball teams. County commissioners have a fiduciary responsibility that demands they carry out their duties with the sole intent and purpose of benefiting all citizens of Loudoun County. As public servants, commissioners are charged with the duty of tending to the business of their citizens and owe an obligation of loyalty to the public as they perform their duties. The Constitution certainly provides lofty goals and aspirations for all public officials, as well as corresponding very real repercussions for failing to uphold the trust of the people. The citizens and property owners of this county deserve better, and we expect to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Jenkins, you're back up.
Make the motion that we forego the second reading.
Second.
We already did that. Oh, did you? If I shut up and pay attention, I know that.
Yes.
Motion to approve 6A and 6B.
Second.
Got a motion to approve 6A and 6B? Commissioner Waller, who was the second? Commissioner Randolph was the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I want to point out once again, while Jim's here, this is what so much the discussion was about on this A3 that we created, that it was going to be impossible, we were stopping anybody from doing anything they want to do with their land. This is our first one, but on Monday or next week's planning commission agenda, there's a bunch of them, and they're just going to go just like they always have. We didn't do anything to anybody, so Gary got to be the test pilot. It worked, didn't it, Jim?
You're clear to leave.
Thank you all, have a good evening.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Next up is an item under my name. It deals with the military leave policy for the Loudoun County Government. It deals with the military leave policy for the Loudoun County government. It's been discussed at the Budget Committee, it passed that. Now the resolution is here. I need a motion and a second.
Make a motion to approve.
Our second.
Motion by Commissioner Shaver to approve the military leave policy, seconded by Commissioner Whitfield. Any further discussion? This would involve money, call or roll.
James.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Quillen. Aye. Satterfield.
Yes.
Whitfield.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Shaver.
Yes.
Waller.
Aye.
Randolph.
Yes.
Okay, next up is Commissioner Shaver.
Y'all remember the workshop, what we discussed about the property from nineteen seventy nine? My motion tonight will be that we affirm the action of the nineteen seventy nine County Commission and that we declare we have abandoned that, all of that right away that was in the red writing, if you remember what it looked like, as they did it back then. So that's my motion, is to abandon and then they can do what they want to with the property.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Quillen. Any further discussion? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next thing is your AC.
What?
The air conditioning.
Is that gonna be me or you?
I'll be here.
You would have to make the motion.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we provide funding and whatever mechanism Aaron's got put together to take care of the broken air conditioner at the Senior Citizen Center. I think we replaced it. My note says eleven thousand, two hundred dollars or something to that effect. So I'll make a motion, we turn the air back on with those folks down there.
Second.
In the county general.
County general, that's the purchase of the equipment only. Our guys will be doing the installation and we will also be closed at the Senior Citizen Center on Wednesday for the install.
That's my motion, everything that was just said there.
We got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, was seconded over here.
Randolph.
Randolph.
Okay, Commissioner Randolph.
Omaha. Omaha.
Omaha. Okay. Any further discussion? Since this involves money, it'll be a roll call vote.
You ready?
You go ahead.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Quillen. Aye. Satterfield.
Yes.
Whitfield.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Shaver.
Yes.
Waller.
Aye.
Randolph.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Motion carries. You're up.
You ready for the next thing? The consideration of approval for statutory bond for Director of Schools, Mike Garen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Whitfield to approve the litter bond grant, seconded by Commissioner Waller.
Whoa. Whoa, statutory for Mike Garen.
What do you think?
It's not old there.
Okay, my mistake. It's been a rough night. Okay, we got a motion.
He was the first.
Second Commissioner Whitfield, seconded by Commissioner Randolph to approve the bond for Mike Garen, the school superintendent. Any further discussion? That's money involved, right? Roll call vote.
Quillen. We're just clarifying what this is.
It's the grant, it's the bond for Mike Garen.
Every, every person of that position from Aaron up has to have bonds.
It has to do with, in case you get sued or something.
Yeah, yeah, or if they steal money or whatever, somebody would do.
I can read you the definition if you want me to.
Yeah, sure.
Because I looked it up earlier just so that I could go.
We just did about a year ago, this same time.
His is every year. I think some of them are every four. There, there we go. Some are every four, some are. It's a type of surety bond that serves as a statutory obligation requiring faithful performance, fidelity, and integrity of a public official's duties to the public. The bond requires public officers and secondary obligors. Can't say that word, I'm sorry. Yeah, to pay a fixed amount if they do not faithfully perform their duties in the office. That's what the meaning is. Thank you. You're welcome.
Hey.
Aye. Okay. Satterfield.
Uh, yes.
Whitfield.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Shaver.
Yes.
Waller.
Aye.
Randolph.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay. Letter A is consideration of a recommendation to approve, accept, approve slash accept the FY twenty twenty five litter grant, no matching funds.
Motion to approve litter grant.
Second. Okay, we got a motion.
Or the bond, whichever it is.
Whatever it is. I'm gonna have Jimmy drop me off to Mittelmann's toot afterwards. Commissioner Shaver made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Satterfield. There's no matching funds, but it's still money, call or roll.
Satterfield.
Yes.
Whitfield.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Shaver.
Yes.
Waller.
Aye.
Randolph.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Quillen. Aye.
All right. Letter B is consideration of a recommendation to approve ARPA funds appropriations as follows. Three thousand from District Seven, Commissioner Cullen, nonprofit contribution to Loudoun County Humane Society. Number two is five thousand dollars from District One A, Commissioner Randolph.
How dare us?
I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
Nonprofit contribution to Loudoun Diamond Club. And number three is five thousand, District One B, from Commissioner James, nonprofit contribution to Loudoun Diamond Club. Did I say something wrong?
No.
Okay.
No.
Said it perfect.
We're talking in class.
I'm just seeing what that club is.
Oh, okay.
Are you entertain a motion? You want to do them all at once or one by one?
I'm good with all of them.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Okay, we got them.
One, two, three.
One, two, three. Motion by Commissioner James.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Randolph.
And I just want to point out that that money going to the Humane Society and the Diamond Club, each commissioner got half a million dollars to spend in their districts as they saw fit. So that's what this money is for, so.
And it's a federal grant.
It's a federal grant.
If that helps you out in what you're saying.
Hey.
Thank you.
You're saying this didn't come out of the taxpayer's pocket to Loudoun County?
It came from the state.
Somebody's taxpayer. Joe Biden, sell that joke.
Joe Biden doesn't have.
It has to go to five oh one Cs. It has to go to five oh one Cs.
Not all of it.
Well.
It has to be spent on government services.
You can't give it if it's not a five oh one C.
Moving right along.
Yes.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner James, seconded by Commissioner Randolph to approve one through three. Any further discussion? All the roll.
Whitfield.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Shaver.
Here, yes.
Waller.
Aye.
Randolph.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Quillen. Aye. Satterfield.
Yes.
Hey, motion carries.
All right. Letter C is consideration of a recommendation to approve a one-time salary supplement disbursement to eligible law enforcement officers identified, identified by the Sheriff's Department.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Whitfield to approve the sheriff's law enforcement one-time salary supplement. I believe it's for in-service, seconded by Commissioner.
Waller.
Waller.
Why is an eligible officer, just out of curiosity?
Yeah.
I was asking the chair. It's post-certified officers that were eligible. You get their in-service pay. There's only one that got their in-service pay for like, for this year, but he's retired, so he's not eligible for it this year.
And this, this is stayed in, stayed out, right?
It is.
Yes, this is not the six hundred, this is a extra money to stay in.
A year for in-service and this year they decide to, as part of their recruitment, average pension, to add another eight hundred, so that's what this is. From the state.
From the state. Any further discussion? Tammy, call or roll.
Cullen.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Shaver.
Yep.
Waller.
Aye.
Randolph.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Quillen. Aye. Satterfield.
Yes.
Whitfield.
Motion carries.
All right, you ready for the next one?
Yep.
Okay, all right. So, letter D is consideration of a recommendation to approve line adjustments and/or amendments in the following funds. Now, everybody has received these spreadsheets. If anybody has any questions, just let me know, okay?
And we went over it last week or in the workshop.
Well, pretty much.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve D one through ten.
Second.
We got a motion by.
Well, seconding.
Okay. Because I knew I had a question.
I'll have to work it out.
I was waiting to get a second to ask the question. Aaron?
Yes.
Where's the firebox?
The, that is part of ARPA distributions.
Okay.
And that's included in Fund One Twenty Seven. But see.
Okay, okay, I'm with you. I, I, I thought it was in this part, I just wasn't sure where.
It's not, because it has already passed through commission.
Okay.
And as part of the resolution, the, the payments also have to be approved by Budget Committee.
After that, it goes.
After that.
I'm with you, I'm with you.
In fact, we've already wrapped the check. Let's go.
Three hundred and.
Ten, a little more than three hundred, ten thousand.
That's the, the, the firebox for the.
Safety train.
Thing, yeah.
Okay.
So you cleared that up for me, so I made a motion, we got a second.
I have one more question.
Okay.
Have we got any other information on the open fund? Have we received any other data on what we can do with this?
Green County sent us a handout.
Green County.
I, I have not reached out to the SMART initiative with UT only because I was waiting for the budget to pass before we changed anything so that we could come back and do whatever we need to do to either reappropriate those funds that, that have been appropriated in that fund or, you know, move forward with those expenses. So I don't have any additional information.
Okay.
To answer your question.
Okay.
Do you want us maybe invite her to a budget meeting, maybe the August budget meeting? Does anyone get her there?
Have her come to the workshop.
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 I mean, I think we have to determine, I mean, there's a million dollars on that cap and we're.
She's, she's the guru. Guru, yeah. She's the know-all right there.
Who did you say?
Most of these Tennessee candidates are using her.
Yeah, we need.
Who is?
Who did you say?
Jennifer.
She's out of some office somewhere or she's some?
She's from UT and it's a part of the SMART initiative.
She's on the seat ass.
And seat ass refers to them, so, yes.
Well, that's something we need, after we get all this booked up, we need to start getting on top of that and find out what can change and all of those.
I agree, because what just happened in the budget may or may not be okay and we'll have to get her input to see whether or not, we need to change that.
Right.
After the fact.
Right. Yeah, we're not changing that, we want Green County all the way on that.
No, we're not.
Okay. We got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Waller to approve items under D one through ten. Any further discussion? Tammy, call or roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Shaver.
Yes.
Waller.
Aye.
Randolph.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Quillen. Aye. Satterfield.
Yes.
Whitfield.
Yes.
Cullen.
All right. And the last thing was the monthly reports, which was included in the packets. And I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Waller, bonds and notaries.
I'd like to make a motion to approve all the ones listed in the packet, as well as Marilyn Levens, Alan Levens, Angela Spence, and Garry Foshee.
Have you got a motion? Who was the second?
It was me.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Waller, seconded by Commissioner Shaver to approve the bonds and notaries with the addition. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Motion adjourned.
One second.